I call this regular scheduled Craven County Board of Commissioners meeting to order, Monday, January 3rd, 2019. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Commissioner Booker?
Here.
Commissioner Jones?
Here.
Commissioner McKay?
Here.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Here.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mark?
Yep.
Chairman Lyer?
Here. If you'd please stand for the pledge and remaining stand for prayer.
I place allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh God, we pause to recall and thank you for the blessings we have enjoyed down through the ages. These blessings you give us so often come by the hand of others. Thank you for the honorable men and women of this Board of Commissioners and all those in service of Craven County. As we reflect on Memorial Day just passed, we gratefully remember men and women of the armed forces of the past, the present, and future. Let us remember greatness is not the number of people that serve us, but the number of people that we serve. Looking to past servants, let us do well the task that has been given our hands to do. May the season of graduation inspire us to grow in knowledge in order to equip ourselves as servants and citizens for God and country. Amen.
Amen. How well, each and every one of you? Just a reminder, if you've got electronic devices, cell phones, if you put them on mute or vibrate, greatly appreciate it. Have a motion to approve the agenda?
Some move.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? First on the agenda, public hearing on 2019-2020 budget.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have anybody that wants to talk to us about the budget.
Notice.
So get out of any clothes.
I know.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion.
We had a motion and a second, but we had no approval. Is that right? We had no vote?
I didn't have a motion.
I didn't have a motion, a second from the public.
She made a motion.
She made the motion. He made the second.
Oh.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we're in public hearing. Now you give me your comments, sir.
Yes, sir. We have no one that wishes to speak, sir.
Okay, hearing no one, I'm going to ask the audience, each and every one of you, is there anyone who wants to speak on the budget? Hearing none. I'll entertain a motion to close public hearing.
Some move.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We're out of public hearing. Okay, at this time, I'm going to recess this meeting until 7:25. We'll reconvene at the courthouse at 7:25? Huh?
Courtroom four.
Court, courtroom four. You need a motion? Have a motion?
Some move.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're in recess convening. June 3rd, if I can remind everyone to please, if you have electronic devices, put them on silence, vibrate. And at this time, I'm going to take chairman's privilege, and I would like to ask for a moment of silence in memory of the Virginia Beach victims who lost their lives last Friday in that tragic event, so if we could just give a moment of silence. Also, on those same lines, if I could ask, if you'd just keep in your prayers, one of our citizens, the young lady who lost her leg at Fort Macon, is a daughter of a firefighter, EMS out of Havelock, so if you keep her and the family in your prayers, it would be greatly appreciated on that. And that, I'll start the meeting. Our first meeting is going to be the... Yeah, the public hearing on the 602 resolution. Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to remind everyone, we're going to give everyone a fair shot of their talking up here. I would expect and hope it's courteous and kind to everybody on both sides of the aisle who's speaking. I would caution anyone for any outbursts or talking on that. We want to hear everybody. We've got about an hour and 15 minutes right now scheduled to hear people talking, and we want to, we want to hear you. But we want to give everybody the same opportunity of being able to speak on that. When you come up here, we need your name, address. We'd like for you to speak to the board and not to the audience or any particular one person. You're speaking to the whole board when you're addressing your comments. And we're going to rotate it, one side, the other side. And my two commissioners will call off your names of starting this, and we'll rotate it back and forth. And from that, if I had no other comments from the board, Vice Chair, first person.
Jerry Shill.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commissioner Board. I'm Jerry Shill, 1406 Oxford Lane in Kings Row, New Bern, Craven County resident, of course, and also chairman of the God and Country Christian Alliance and speaking on their behalf. I appreciate the resolution that was being put forward. We support it very much. I don't know where, how we got to this point. If, I think, everybody in the room, if we'd have thought we were going to talk about this issue 20 years ago, we wouldn't have believed it. But from a cultural standpoint, how did we get here? I think, I think part of the reason is moving demographically from rural to an urban setting. I know when I grew up, nobody had to tell us, growing up on a farm, about birds and bees. We went out in the barn, and Dad put the cow in with the bull and didn't say anything. He didn't tell us anything. And then a while later, he looked at the gestation table, and we'll look, a few months later, we had a calf. We could figure that stuff out all by ourselves. You know, it's just different growing up in a farm. One thing that Dad taught us, I can remember him staying up all hours of the night when a calf was born, or if one of the pigs had a litter, he would stay up all night just to save one. That was just the way he was. His attitude was, if you can't show respect for animals, you can't show respect for man. That was, that was Dad. That was the way he was and the way we grew up. And, you know, I think most of us today would do the same thing for any animal that is struggling to stay alive. But yet, here we are, talking about not abortion in general, but an abortion survivor that's grasping "stay alive" on the table. That's what this is about. It's not the legal abortion that got us to that point, but a botched abortion where the infant is still alive trying to stay alive. And, you know, we just came from a weekend of peace and unity, and where a lot of the churches participated in that. Ladies and gentlemen, we're not going to have peace and unity if we don't protect the most innocent, the most vulnerable among us. And that's what we're talking about here, protecting the most vulnerable and innocent among us. If we can't do that, ladies and gentlemen, there's not going to be peace, there's not going to be unity. And I beg you to adopt this resolution, and let's get this veto overridden. It would be good for North Carolina and good for humanity, and as a Christian, I stand by that statement. God bless you all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner McKeon?
Mr. Vivian Moore, please.
Hi, my name's Vivian Moore. Live at 4442 River Shore Drive in New Bern. I'm here to speak against the proposed resolution and support HB 602 because it targets healthcare providers with the threat of being charged with murder based on a false narrative that they're not already required to provide appropriate care when there's a live birth, regardless of what the live birth results from is irrelevant. The implication is not grounded in medical science or fact. The bill requires the same care for a live birth resulting from an abortion as would be rendered to any other infant born at the same gestational age, including transport to a hospital, regardless of the infant's condition, and regardless of whether the physician and the parents think the infant is truly viable, or whether it's in the infant's best interest. This is contrary to all medical practice at all stages of life, including end of life and, and other times when, when it comes up. A study was published in the New England Journal of Medicine in 2015 that said active life-saving intervention for infants born before 22 weeks is generally not recommended. The study noted the extremely difficult decision of whether to use treatment for infants born near the term of viability, saying that in many such cases, it's unclear whether the treatment is in the infant's best interest. Abortions in the third trimester are very rare, and they usually come up only when the fetus or the life of the mother is at risk. So let's imagine a situation where this might come up in the next minute and a half. A woman is in her 21st week of pregnancy. She goes in, and the family's all ready for this new birth. They've named the child, they've bought all the furniture, everybody's looking forward to this happening, and she goes in and gets an ultrasound at 22 weeks and finds out that there's an abnormality that is going to cause the baby, an abnormality, give you an example of such an abnormality might be, an encephaly, which means that no brain is present in the baby, that it can't survive outside the mother for more than a few hours or days at the most. So the terrible, terrible question that they're faced with is what to do? What is the best thing to do for this baby? Is the best thing to do for this baby to try to prolong the baby's suffering for as long as possible, or is it to allow the parents and the child to comfort each other and, and care for the precious life as long as it lasts? Is it really in that baby's best interest to try to prolong its life? I think the result of this bill would be to take away from healthcare providers their professional, their professional judgment, which frankly, I don't know of any instance in North Carolina where the law against infanticide has not been enforced. There is no exception. The, the resolution indicates that there's a loophole which just simply doesn't exist. I think a majority, I'm sorry, I'm out of time.
Thank you, sir. Vice Chair?
Chris Kling. I appreciate the opportunity to come and speak to y'all. New York Times, February 28th, 1982. When Andrew Percival was born last December 9th, he was an eight-pound bundle of medical history. By all appearances, Andrew was a normal newborn with the reflexes and the level of alertness of one expects in a newlyterm baby. Andrew had been due on December 25th, Christmas Day. But two months earlier, prenatal diagnosis had revealed that Andrew was suffering from a severe and probably life-threatening condition, fetal hydrocephalus, in which fluid filled regions of the brain called the ventricles, expanded monstrously, and pushed so hard on the brain itself that the nerve cells failed to develop. The result of fetal hydrocephalus is usually profound retardation, blindness, cerebral palsy, or death. Andrew was saved from fate by a team of doctors at Prentice Women's Hospital and Maternity Center in Chicago, who treated him when they hoped they had time to salvage some healthy brain tissue. They operated on Andrew while he was still in the womb. Andrew was one of the first travelers to cross the brave new frontier of fetal surgery. He and a handful of others had similar treatment risks representing medical advances that seemed unthinkable even 10 years ago. For doctors that are discovering, not only can the fragile and previously unviable, environment of the womb be tapped and sounded to provide vital information about the progress of pregnancy, but that the fetus itself can tolerate corrective surgery while inside the uterus. Now I ask you, if this, if ultrasounds and CAT scans and sonograms were available in 1964, can you imagine retired RN with four, two children, four years and older, to find herself pregnant with her fifth child, and then find out that this fifth child was going to have hydrocephalus, or water on the brain, congenital hydrocephalus? And that woman, would she feel obligated to have an abortion because she couldn't take care of a fifth child, obviously with more brain damage than the other four? If she did, I wouldn't be here speaking to you. Now, what do they call that position that a baby's in? The fetal position, right? Because that's the most popular position people lay, the fetal position. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Linda Moore?
Linda Moore, 4442 River Shore Drive, New Bern, North Carolina. I'm a mother of two sons. One of them joined my family through adoption because we were not able to have a second child. So you understand for me, the issue of abortion seems odd that I would be in support of women's right to choose, but I am. I'm here to speak against the proposed resolution of House Bill 602. It is unnecessary addition to North Carolina laws, and I believe that the Craven County Board of Supervisors, Commissioners should not support it. Infants are protected by laws against infanticide in every state in the United States, including North Carolina, and there is no evidence that these laws are not enforced in North Carolina. I could find no single record of a reported case of infanticide by a medical professional in the state of North Carolina. The proposed bill is written without specificity needed to ensure that medical providers and families are not found in violation of it for providing necessary and emergency medical services for a woman, a teen, or a girl that requires it. The underlying premise of the bill that infants showing signs of life after attempted abortions are either actively killed or left to die is false and seems to be being used as a scare tactic by those in favor of it. If such things were to happen, the action would be covered by existing murder and infanticide laws in the state of North Carolina. House Bill 602 targets health professionals who provide medical services for women, teens, and girls with the threat of serious criminal penalty. The bill would penalize medical professionals for providing safe and legal family services for a woman, teen, or girl, and her unborn child for fear that their medical judgment in administering the appropriate and necessary medical services could later be viewed as criminal. This bill is not based on medical science or fact and would create confusion both among patients and medical professionals about options available during complex and emergency situations. It demonizes and criminalizes medical professionals. It stigmatizes reproductive healthcare and seeks to intimidate physicians and other medical providers in order to prevent them from providing appropriate medical care for their patients. This bill is an attack on North Carolina's access to safe family planning services and an attack on physicians and other medical providers who provide these services. It is unnecessary because federal and state laws already address the issue.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ladies and gentlemen, I've asked for no outbreaks. I gave one side each with no further ado. I appreciate, otherwise, we're going to be here all night. I don't want anybody intimidated, and I don't want anybody shown disrespect. So if you could hold and just listen to what people have to say, it would be greatly appreciated.
Thanks, Chair.
Lee Kirkman?
My address is 5255 Highway 55 West, Cove City, North Carolina. Mr. Chairman and fellow commissioners, as a lifelong resident, parent, and pastor in Craven County, I'm deeply concerned and troubled by the conversations that we are having around the abortion issue. It is a sad state of affairs when we are even debating the life of a child regardless of the circumstances in which he or she may have been born. It is reflection that we, as a society, have lost our moral compass and our direction. If we are willing to kill children without hesitation or without question, then which group of people will be next? Will it be the elderly, the mentally disabled, or the sick? What we're actually doing is laying the groundwork for the purging of society. Some people would disagree, but if we have no conscience in the killing of an innocent child, then there's absolutely no stopping us with what group of people would be next. It's simply a matter of time. We must realize that children are a gift from God, and that children are not a burden, they're not an inconvenience, they are not an accident, they are not a mistake, nor are they a hindrance to our lives, but they are a gift and must be treated as such. Psalm chapter 127, verse 3, tells us that the children are a heritage of the Lord, and the fruit of the womb is the reward. When we receive a gift from someone, we're thankful for it. We cherish it, we value it, we take care of that gift. God has entrusted to us the most precious gift possible, and that is the life of a child. We, as parents, adults, and community, are to preserve and to protect that gift of life. When we allow the killing of the innocent to take place, we do not realize the message that we are teaching the next generation. It clearly teaches that we do not value life unless it is convenient. As a former high school teacher and administrator, I often heard adults complain about how bad kids behave, which included their actions and their attitudes. My question was always, well, where do you think that they learned that behavior from? We are teaching and modeling the character, values, attitudes, and actions that we will see in the future generations in our county, our state, and our nation. Our actions speak louder than our words. Proverbs chapter 22, verse 6, reminds us that we are to train up a child in the way he should go, and when he is old, he will not depart from it. What is the message that we want to teach our children? I strongly urge you to vote in favor of passing this resolution, which will send a clear message, not only to our state legislature and governor, but to our entire state and nation, that the life of the child is of utmost importance, and that we value the life of our children. It's time that we end this debate. It's time for us to quit playing politics with the lives of innocent babies, and it's time for us to move forward to preserve, protect, and defend this gift from God. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Chairman Liner, Ms. Mitchell, and gentlemen. My name is Helen Robinson, and I live at 1906 Cayenne Court in New Bern. I do not believe in killing babies. In my view, killing any human being is reprehensible. As you know, laws already exist in our country that prohibit murder, including the killing of babies, so I'm opposed to this bill. I do believe in supporting life for children. I believe children need to be protected, nurtured, supported, and guided. I believe those who speak up about protecting children should walk their talk and provide homes for children who need them. I believe those who speak up about protecting children should work for safe homes and safe environments and good childcare and good public education. My husband and I have two adopted kids. My older son has come home today from Cary to celebrate my birthday today, and as a birthday gift to me, he's with me here tonight. He's the big guy over there. And Aaron, thank you for letting me be your mother. I will always support Aaron to support him in having a healthy and worthwhile life. Back to HB 602. I'm opposed to this bill because it's an exaggerated and unnecessary response to a terrible problem that's been grossly misrepresented, in my view. When an infant is delivered with terrible abnormalities, just because an umbilical cord is pulsating or muscles are twitching, that's not necessarily an indication of a viable human being. These painful, heartbreaking, tragic situations should be addressed privately, privately, by the parents and the healthcare providers. When to remove life support from such an infant that usually will die within days anyway, this should not be the business of the government. Such difficult decisions belong to the parents and the doctors. For those of you who care deeply about kids, don't get distracted by meddling in painful personal decisions. Please, please, direct your energy toward working for the well-being of children who need loving families and safe environments. Thank you.
Rex Bennett?
My name is Rex Bennett, and I reside at 112 Webster Lane in Vanceboro. I come to you tonight as a concerned citizen, asking that you do pass the resolution before you concerning the Born Alive Protection Act. I stand before you in firm support of the right to life. And while this resolution and support of the Born Alive Protection Act does not specifically address the issue of abortion as a whole, it does address something that I believe we should all be able to agree on. What happens to a child who beyond all odds happens survives, who survives such a procedure? In the present state of affairs, a child who survives such a procedure can be merely discarded as he or she struggles to live. In my view, the very thought of this is not only sad, but also unconscionable, to say the very least. I realize that there are others who hold a differing point of view, and I recognize that is their right to do so. I respectfully disagree. As I approach the podium tonight, I do so in firm support of this resolution, but my support, however, is not based solely on my Christian worldview, although I am unapologetically a Christian. Having said that, I recognize that government at its core is a secular entity. Therefore, I would like to offer my support of this resolution, not only on the basis of my Christian belief, of which others may or may not agree with. Instead, I also, I wish to offer my support of this resolution on the basis of something that everyone in this room has in common, and that is that simply we are all part of the same family, the human family. What we speak of tonight is a basic human right, the right to live, the right to breathe, the right to thrive as a human being, as I am grateful to have had the opportunity to do so myself for the past 40 or so years. We in this room are amongst the privileged tonight because we have been granted the opportunity to live, and as such, one would think that we should all be able to agree that life is sacred. We should all be able to agree that every child, especially those who have against all odds survived an abortion, have the right to live and receive medical care. all odds survived an abortion, have the right to live and receive medical care. Now, it is not lost on me that everyone does not agree on these basic concepts, and I know that there's much controversy surrounding the subject that we speak of tonight. But I do believe that our founding fathers had this in mind when they adopted and signed the Declaration of Independence, which says in part, "We hold these truths to be self-evident that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness." If you notice, life was the very first of the unalienable rights mentioned here. Why? Because it is the very foundation upon which every other right that we have is built on. I ask you and urge you to support this resolution. By doing so, you will be a voice for life. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I find the people's handwriting, so I believe this is Valerie Truitt. Did I pronounce that correctly? Valeria, I'm sorry, I apologize.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. My name's Valeria Truitt. I live at 2407 Bryce's Creek Road in New Bern. Before voting to support this resolution, please consider the consequences of passing the proposed bill. The proposed change in the general statutes addresses a nonexistent problem, and it takes the focus off providing appropriate care for newborns and puts it squarely on healthcare providers, avoiding being charged with murder when carrying out their duty to provide care. Two parts of the general statutes are affected by this legislation. First, an addition is made to Chapter 90 Medicine and Allied Occupations specifying standards to be followed in the case of a live birth following an abortion. The new standards do not differ materially from standards already in place. Second, an addition is made to Chapter 14 Criminal Law. Paragraph 14-17C currently reads in part, "For the purposes of this section, this shall constitute murder where a child is born alive but dies as a result of injuries inflicted prior to the child being born alive." The proposed bill would add at that point this clause, "Or to dies as a result of an intentional overt act performed after the child is born alive." The change does not specify applying only to abortions or that the overt act is intended to cause death. As a result, it puts all providers at risk of being charged with murder for any postpartum deaths occurring while they are providing the legally required care. That risk applies to the obstetrician delivering the baby and the nurses assisting the labor and delivery, staffing the newborn nursery, and staffing neonatal intensive care units where they provide specialized care for infants with the highest risk factors. It also includes the next door neighbor who happens on an emergency at-home delivery, the Walmart shopper surprised by an emergency delivery in the produce section, and the EMS technicians who answer the 911 call. If this change becomes law, it will strongly discourage insurance companies from providing malpractice insurance to obstetricians, midwives, and nurse practitioners, and nurses in the labor and delivery, newborn nursery, and NICU specialties. It will discourage practitioners from entering those specialties. It will particularly discourage nurses from entering or continuing in the neonatal intensive care field where the fragile patients are the most vulnerable and at the highest risk of death. Do you want to endorse that outcome? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ray Griffin.
Amen. God bless all of you, and God bless America. Amen? Ray Griffin, Vanceboro, North Carolina. When God gave His laws to man, a great revelation was made. Human fingers wrote down the words that fell from the lips of God in order that human tongues might hear them from human ears. Our leaders today give us hundreds of reasons why we in America are in such a mess. Today, to declare a thinker, those of a sound mind realize it's apparent that we have lost our way because we have ceased to listen to the voice of God. We have people today graduated from our colleges with high degrees, lawyers, doctors, scientists, even some pastors and preachers with big titles, but yet they have no common sense. Education without God makes men a clever devil. In earlier days, when most men in America believed that God had spoken through the book, we justly were called Christians. The life and welfare of this nation depends upon our standards and morals, and we must return to the old standards which made America great. Thou shalt not kill; ye shall not murder is a moral imperative. The imperative to not kill is in the context of unlawful killing resulting in blood guilt. Sin is like a secret bleeding that robs the vital parts of their essential nourishment. How near to death in some people is even the power to discern between good and evil. Human life is sacred because God is involved from beginning to the end. This commandment also means that we must defend the lives of others. Murder is a heart problem. Jesus said, "For out of the heart perceive evil thoughts." God said, "We must obey His commandments, or we will face the consequences on judgment day." We need to stop killing the babies. In Pemaco, there is a guardian now. It's called the Guardian of the Innocent. They stay there, and they just bury those that have been aborted, innocent children that have not done a thing in the world. And I say to people today that wrote this bill for abortions and let them die in any way, they are so narrow-minded that they could look through a peephole with both eyes. They are narrow-minded, don't know exactly what's going on. And anybody that supports this bill is against the Word of God and against the Bible. We need to stand up today, as I say, get fired up, get prayed up, and get ready to go up and stand for the life and rights of human children and human beings. I believe in truth. I believe in being moral. I believe in getting back to the standards and to the Word of God. Life is in the blood. Life is precious. We must stand on that. We must stand for those that can't stand for themselves. Stand up for the babies. Stand up for truth. Stand up for the Word of God. It's time we get fired up, prayed up, and stand up and get ready to go up, because if we continue passing these laws that are hurting our little babies, judgment is coming to America. Amen?
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Helen Burlaize? Burlaize.
Good evening, Commissioners. Well, my name's Helen Burlaize. I, my husband and I reside at 112 Pine Horse Drive. I describe myself as a mother, a wife, a nurse educator, and a Christian. I have a master's degree in community health nursing, and I've been on the faculty at the University of Texas Health Science Center in San Antonio. I'm retired, and I'm an independent voter. I've had a spontaneous abortion, better known as a miscarriage to most of you. It was at fourteen weeks. I had one live birth, one adopted child, I have five grandchildren, and one has special needs, and he'll probably never be able to be independent on his own. So I've witnessed and experienced pain, joy, sadness, and tears, so I feel I can speak tonight. HB 602 is designed to target the healthcare providers who safely care for women by threatening them with jail time and prosecution. This is government interference in women's healthcare by intimidation and threats. It is also one of the tools that is being used to steadily undermine the healthcare for women as our electorate prepares to try and overturn Roe versus Wade. HB 602 is unnecessary. The Born Alive Infant Protection Act of 2002, which was passed during George Bush's tenure, already provides legal protection to infants that are born alive. Politics should not be part of healthcare. Rather, let's look at some of the underlying reasons that a woman might seek an abortion, and I'm gonna take a little different tack right here. With the exception of a birth defect, the majority of abortions are due to factors influenced by violence, poverty, lack of education, and inability to support a child or another child. Abortions are not a frivolous activity. Women take this seriously. It hurts in the heart. Yes, some women are guilty of contributing to these factors, but you know what? We are all responsible. Yes, we're responsible. As individuals, as Christians, or persons of other faiths, we should be challenged to look at what is going on in the United States that we can't take care of our children. Why is it the infant mortality rate in North Carolina is seven, in North Carolina is 7.2 as compared to the United States of 5.8? Craven County is 6.9. How have we contributed to these deaths? Why do we have limited family planning? Why do we not have paid maternity leave? Why do we not, why are we not holding men accountable? Would you consider legislation holding men accountable as well as women? As a member of God's family, we take care of one another. We do not persecute each other. We lift each other up. We put our faith into action. I cannot support this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Tyker Gonzalez.
Hi, Tyker Gonzalez, 125 Turkey Quarter Creek Road in Deliver Life, North Carolina. Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. I come before you this evening about an issue we shouldn't have to be discussing. Does a newborn infant that survived an abortion have the right to live and be treated for its survival? Should those who do not perform medical necessary tasks to save that child be prosecuted? If it's not happening, why are people against it? There are some people think that county commissioners meeting is no place for this, being a state issue, but I beg to differ. The local level is where people are more inclined to participate. The local level is where we find everyday people, communities, volunteers, family, and friends. It's the local level that has affected the most in these same communities by the passage or non-passage of state bills. As I wrote to you previously this week, what we are facing with this resolution supporting life after a botched abortion is not a Democrat or Republican issue, it is a good or evil issue, a life or death issue, period. The life of a child needs to be protected always. I don't know where we went off the rails thinking otherwise. Perhaps it was when personal responsibility went out the window. I applaud this board for setting a standard and not being silent in taking this up. Recently, the world's youngest surviving infant was born at 8.6 ounces at only 23 weeks old. In comparison, that's about the size of an apple. Sabie she has named is now home living with her family. Kenan Moore, born on January 9, 2012, in Charlotte, North Carolina, weighed only 9.6 ounces at birth, not quite the size of that soda can. She was born at only 24 weeks. I have a dear pastor friend and his wife. Their daughter was born in North Carolina at 29 weeks, weighing only 2 pounds and 4 ounces, about that bag of salt. She's now an attorney at a prestigious college in North Carolina. I could give you lists of dozens of babies that once had no chance, yet they are thriving adults today. Yes, some were born by censurian section, but others by natural birth. My hope through this resolution is to wake up our North Carolina legislators, that they will see clearly here tonight that the local communities care about this, that we are strong in our resolve for life, and that we will always protect those who cannot speak for or protect themselves. A quote by Thomas Jefferson, "The care of human life and happiness and not their destruction is the first and only object of good government." Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ms. Brenda McGee.
Helen, my name is Brenda McGee, and I live at 208 Castle Ridge Road in New Bern. I'm here tonight to encourage you to vote no on the resolution regarding House Bill 602. As others have previously stated, this bill is not needed, and it will also threaten the access to healthcare for women and fragile babies in North Carolina. In my experience, when access to healthcare services becomes more limited, it's the poor women and often the women of color who have, who suffer more and who have more difficulty than those who have more money than they. I worked for 38 years in North Carolina as a school psychologist. My career was spent working with and seeking services for special needs children, their families, and their, and their teachers. I now volunteer as a guardian alight in Court District 3B. Guardians alight work as advocates for children who are in the court system because of abuse and neglect in their families. If anyone thinks I don't care about children, I don't value life, I don't want to kill babies, it's absurd, because I've spent my life trying to defend and, and help vulnerable children get the services that they need. I'm concerned about the emotionality of this issue and how I think it distracts from, from the services that we need to be providing for our children. There are a great many problems and real issues in our county regarding children, and I think we need to be focused and be addressing those. In Craven County, we have a number of parents who struggle every single day to meet the needs of their children. Often struggling families are referred to the Department of Social Services. We have many people in our, in our county who work with families to help them in these difficult situations. However, finding sources of healthcare, mental health treatment, and substance abuse treatment for families is a real problem in our county every single day. After children are born, it's, it's equally important that we get services for them. I think time and energy would be better spent, and rather than debating this resolution to directing our energies towards improving the lives of children in need. I was unable to find in my search any information about children who are killed by healthcare providers at birth. I just can't find data on that. There is a lot of data, however, and I found some interesting things at the Department of Justice about fatalities of children in, from age zero to 18. I was shocked to see that 50% of children who, who are killed by either abuse or homicide are below the age of one. Zero to one, 50% of the children who are killed in our country, and most often it's done by parents. I'm not saying that to blame parents, I'm saying it to really need to focus on getting services for families who are in need, and we do have a lot of that need in our county. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Tamara Leonard.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Tamara Leonard. I live at 921 Bryce's Court in New Bern. I am here in support of HB 602. I commend the Commissioners for considering this to support the state legislature, the General Assembly. There are so many things that have been said that I was gonna highlight, but the 2002 law that was brought up, the Born Alive Infants Protection Act, which easily passed Congress. When Senator Sasse brought up the bill this year, the S311, the Born Alive Abortion Survivors' Protection Act, the reason he did that was he said the 2002 law did not mandate medical care. The Senator's website said the recent bill would require that if a botched abortion results in a live birth of an infant, healthcare practitioners must exercise the same degree of professional skill and care to protect the newborn as would be offered to any other child born alive at the same gestational age. They mentioned, a gentleman spoke earlier tonight, mentioned the 2015 study from the New England Journal of Medicine. He took the first paragraph of that. The study looked at the cases of 4,987 infants without congenital anomalies or birth defects born before 27 weeks of gestation. So there's a lot more to that. It found that 5.1% of the babies born at 22 weeks gestational age survived, and 3.4% survived without severe impairment. Several weeks into the gestation, at 26 weeks, 81.4% of the babies survived, 75.6% without severe impairment. The reason that I'm here, like I said, we can debate this back and forth. The bottom line, it's not about a woman's right to choose. We're not saying that women cannot have abortions. We are not here to scare people about leaving the medical practice or taking care of neonatal babies. My nephew was born at 21 weeks, and he would fit. My nephew was born at 21 weeks, and he would fit in the palm of your hand. And he was 7.8 ounces, his lungs were not formed, his heart was not whole, and for the next nine months, even though the doctors kept saying, you know, you're ruining this child for life, you're ruining this child for life, he's never going to be normal, Ryan is now 32 years of age, and a productive young man and member of our society. So I am here tonight to urge the Commissioners to support the General Assembly and pass this resolution, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ms. Mandy Chu?
Chairman, Commissioners, I'm a transplant from Texas, but thank you for hearing me. I'll take just a moment of your time. I'm a Christian. My name is Mandy Chu, C-H-E-W. My address is 109 Oak Hill Lane, New Bern, North Carolina. I'm a Christian, I'm a missionary. I've been fighting for women since 1980. I was the chair of the Transitional Living Center of the Shelter for Battered Women for six years. I've seen it all. Most importantly, I worked with a group of 21 physicians, all pediatric subspecialists, in El Paso, Texas. 19 of these 21 physicians donated their time for children with special healthcare needs, those with spina bifida, those with anencephaly, those with most horrible birth defects you can imagine. And I am against this resolution because it will hamper and it will tie the hands of our healthcare professionals. Until you have worked in a high-risk newborn situation, until you have worked into, in an ICU and watched children go through ECMO and be in an incubator for nine, 10, 12 months of their life, you know not what it is, the struggle that these professionals go through saving children. I have never worked with a physician that did anything but try to save the life of a child. So I am against this provision because it will handicap our healthcare professionals, and I hope that you will use your time, all of your energies, to provide the healthcare services, the medical services, and the, and the family services that our community needs far more than they need your time in this particular instance. Thank you so much for letting me say these things. I appreciate it.
Eric Queen?
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner, Commissioners. My name is Eric Queen, 3200 Caterina Lane in New Bern, North Carolina. And let me first say, thank each and every one of you on this board for having the courage today to stand one way or another, because that's about what's about to happen. You're either going to stand for life or against it. Let's be clear, we're not talking about the abortion issue. We're not talking about whether abortion should be legal in North Carolina or anywhere. What we're talking about is whether or not you are going to stand with life about a human being who is outside of the womb and has taken a breath. The fact that we're even having this conversation, even having this debate is absurd. Again, we're not talking about a murderous act of abortion, we're talking about the murderous act after abort, after birth. This child has taken a breath outside of the womb. So again, I don't think I need three minutes to say my piece on this. What I'm asking each and every single one of you today is to continue with that courage as you have the courage to take a stand, but have the courage to let the citizens know that you stand with life and not against it. Again, I appreciate each and every one of your time, and for all of you for having the courage to let the citizens know exactly where you stand today. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Michael Schachter?
Michael Schachter, 1711 Tuscaraw Rims Road. And I just have a few notes here. When I first saw it, this resolution come up, first thing I thought was that this is not a legislative matter for the county. We were told that we should only speak about things that the county actually could do something about, that the Commissioners should, could actually do something about. And I don't think this is an issue that they can't. There are many, many other issues that need to be talked about. The opioid crisis, resilience for the next storm. I only see the purpose of the bill is to create division. And so very simply, you know, whatever your opinion on the bill, whether you're opposed to it or for it, I ask the board not to consider the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Bill Wenson? Maybe I pronounced that wrong. I have a hard time reading the name. Win, Winchin?
Wingard, by chance?
Guard?
I don't know my own name, I can't read.
No, it's not that, sir. We just can't read.
I am Bill Wingard, 4705 Edgewood Drive. I would ask you to support this Bill 602 with one more brick in the wall of protection for the lives of our children. I found out today that I have become a super senior. When you get to be 85, you're now a super senior. Super dumb maybe, but I'm a super senior. I have seen our country change from a country that loved life and liberty to become a secular country. Born in the Great Depression, lived through the world wars, I've seen the attitude of our people change. It has already been said here today that a few years ago, this would never come up, it would never have been on the ballot. It is said that they know, some people say they know of no examples of babies being killed, but what I see on the news and what I read in New York, last week in Illinois, proposed in Virginia, these protections are being taken away from these children. I would ask you, for Christ's sake, I would ask you for the life of these folks. I was given up the die when I was a child. Was never supposed to live, medically speaking, until I was 21 years old. And I know I'm here by the grace of God. I just finished reading a book entitled, A Boy on the Wooden Books, concerning a child that grew up in Hitler's Germany and went into the concentration camps. And by the grace of God, he miraculously survived. And the thing that touched my heart so much was, outside, our life was going on as usual. Inside those walls, it wasn't just the Jews, 6 million Jews did die, but it was Christians and Jews and others that were out of favor with the Nazi government. And there, it was indescribable, because life had lost its value as far as those people were concerned. Those people inside of those walls had no value of life at all. I believe that a person is created in the image of God. And I think we should, all we can, if we err, let's err on the side, on the side of trying to protect them and do what's right. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Ashbrook?
Good evening. My name is Trudy Ashbrook. I live at 106 Montreux Lane in Taberna, New Bern. I am asking you to vote against this issue. I realize a lot of the reasons have already been spoken. I just want to speak to you from the heart, and I want to say, no woman ever would want to have an abortion. No woman would ever pick to have an abortion. But if she were going to have an abortion, she would be doing it in the very beginning of a pregnancy. The people who talked about in utero surgery, you're talking seven, eight, maybe even ninth month. You're not talking about a fetus that is one or two months old at the most. The woman has the most invested in this. She is the one whose life is going to change. She is the one who has to deal forever. If this child is born with some kind of problem after a botched abortion or whatever, and they're able to maintain life, or a beating heart, depends on how you define life, who pays for the transport of this child to the specialist in the hospital? Who pays for the specialist? Who pays for the neonatal care, the prenatal care, the pediatric care? Who pays for all that if this doctor keeps this child breathing? This woman is going to be responsible, and she's not going to be able to do it. Most people can't afford their own medicines today, let alone a lifetime taking care of a child that can't do anything but breathe. Now, I am a retired teacher. I had a master's degree in special education. I know from what I'm speaking, and I appreciate those of you who have listened intently. I know this drones on and on, it can become blinding, and you can glaze over, but this is an important issue. It not only affects the doctor, it affects people. And people are important, and their lives are important, and women are educated enough to make decisions with their doctors. They come together, they make the right decisions, and that's what we're asking of you. Please vote against this.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Commissioners and Chairman, thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm here in favor of the resolution. I'm in favor of life. July 5th, 1972, my late wife Jane went into premature labor. We went to Craven County Hospital. Around 2:00 AM the next morning, the doctor came into the room and said, "I'm sorry, she miscarried." I was heartbroken when I got her back to the room. I left and went home, and I was tired, and I was very sad. We'd been trying to have children for a long time. The next morning, my phone rings, my dad on the other end. He said, "Son, you better get to the hospital, and you better get here now." And I said, "Is something wrong with Jane?" He said, "No, son, you have a daughter." I went to the hospital, and I saw my daughter in the incubator. She was whole, she had hair, all her arms and legs, and she was, she was a perfect child. Back then, I couldn't touch her. They were trying their best to save her life. They worked on, with her day in and day night, and they did the very best they could. She died on July 12th, seven days later. I still miss her. All I want is for children that are born with that life she was born to have the opportunity to live and to, to be people. I don't want to see them die. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Linda Wallmeyer? I know I'm butchering this, I'm sorry. Please tell me how to pronounce your name, I can't read. Say that. I'm sorry, I couldn't read your handwriting, so thank you for coming and speaking tonight.
That's okay, it happens all the time. Yes, I'm Linda Wallmeyer. I live at 1987 Acorn Drive here in New Bern. I wasn't really prepared to talk tonight, but I felt like I had to. Women, women are, women are very smart. They know what they're doing, and if they make a decision to have an abortion, that's a decision that I don't think would come easy to anyone, and I think it would be between her, her family, and her doctor. I don't think the government should be involved in a woman's health issue. And I think that the bottom line is, you know, if you're talking about these babies after an abortion, it is a woman's decision. And are we, I just don't think the government should be involved in this. They talk about keeping the government out of the business and what have you, but here they are trying to take, not advantage, but they're, they're involved in the most intimate and hardest decision I think any woman would ever have to make. And I'm also looking, and I thought about, how qualified are any of us to make these decisions? Are any of you medical? Does anybody have a degree, a doctor, a nurse, or anything? But yet you're making these decisions, and we're not second-class citizens. We can make decisions on our own, and I think we can make them on, on our children, our babies, and whatever. I don't think the government should be doing this, and so I hope that you don't not vote for this. I hope you would vote no. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Carol Creighton?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, first I come to as a Christian, and second as a mother.
Address, please.
905 Hampton Way, Trent Woods. I come to you first as a Christian and the second as a mother, the two things that bring me more joy than anything else in the world. What I don't come as is prepared. I'm not a public speaker, and I'm definitely not in my comfort zone, but I feel like I just had to speak. Just before I came tonight, I saw on the news, there was a 20 young, 21 or 21-year-old young man over in Pitt County that jumped on a turtle and killed it. And I'm sure everybody's gasping, thinking, "Oh, my goodness, I cannot imagine." And it just shows the lack of respect for life. We have laws that protect animals, we have laws that protect eagles, and we're, we're sitting here having a talk about the killing of babies. I hear the comments that politics should not be involved in this decision. I agree 100%, but it already is when taxpayer money goes to fund abortions. We talk about the cost. One thing that hasn't been brought up, some mental health of the women that have had abortions in later life when they realize what they've done. 32 years ago, as a single parent, I was pregnant, and even at 32 years of age, being a single mother and pregnant in the South was not an easy thing to do. And some of the tests that I had early on showed that my son would probably have Down Syndrome, and they wanted to do father tests, and they suggested that I consider having an abortion. I decided that whatever God gifted me with, with this child, would be whatever I got, and if he had Down Syndrome, I would love him just as much as I would if he was the smartest kid in the block. He was born six weeks early in, at Pitt County, and he's come back now practicing medicine at, in New Bern. This is the 21st century. We talk about, women don't do this typically to make a choice. It's not birth control, but I think it is being used that way. I mean, there's so many methods other than abortion that should be considered, but last and foremost, I'll say this, a fetus was the first person that recognized who Jesus Christ was. And I just, I just hope you'll consider anything that can, can help save the life of a child. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ms. Diane Tindall?
Thank you. Chairman Liner, Commissioners, I'm Diane Tindall. I live at 501 Chinkapin Lane in Trent Woods. I come to you tonight asking that you not pass the resolution in support of House Bill 602. This is an emotional issue, and it's easy to get caught up in it, but I would present to you that as county commissioners, that this is really not within your scope, respectfully. I think that you're doing a great job on a lot of issues in Craven County. I was at Craven County. I was at Creekside Park earlier today with my dog, and that park is wonderful, and that's a great opportunity for children. I think you do a wonderful opportunity with...wonderful job with Craven Community College, where I retired as a professor emeritus. I think you're doing what you can with the schools and doing a great job there in terms of your budget and in terms of providing them with facilities. And I know this has been an extremely challenging year. You've heard a lot of anecdotal evidence on both sides of the issue, but I would respectfully present to you that I think that this House bill is redundant. I personally am not in favor of it, but I would ask that you not consider the resolution because I believe that you have other, more important issues to consider as county commissioners, and I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Luann Atkinson.
Good evening. I am Lois Ann Atkinson. I live at 501 New Street in New Bern, North Carolina. I am speaking in favor of a resolution seeking legislative support for House Bill 602. Botched abortions are a reality, a tragic reality in our country. Babies are born alive from botched abortions. I respectfully disagree with those who say that these babies are left to die. They are. It happens. More often than we want to admit, babies that are born alive from botched abortions are denied medical care. House Bill 602 will move us closer to ensuring that there is no legal loophole in our law that would allow for such an act of willfully taking the life of a child that survived an abortion. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
At this time, we have no other sign-ups for HB 602. I will call on Commissioner Jones. Do we have anyone signed up for other agenda topics to discuss?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman.
We have none at this time, no other petitions of citizens. We will move on to the consent agenda. I will hear a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call.
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mark?
Yes.
Yes. All right, next on the addenda, HB 602 resolution. Open up for discussion for the board.
Chairman.
Sir.
It's interesting to hear all the speakers tonight. Appreciate everybody coming, and appreciate especially the audience that showed up in support of one side or the other. Reminds me of a story I heard years ago about three blind men who stumbled upon an elephant. And they tried to figure out what this creature was like. And the first one goes up, and he puts his arm around the leg of the elephant, and he said, "I think it's like a mighty tree." Second one goes up and puts...grabs a hold of the elephant by the trunk, and he said, "No, it's like a gigantic snake." The third one grabbed the tail of the elephant and said, "Well, it kind of reminds me of a room." The same animal, with three completely different views of what that animal was. Listening to all the speakers tonight reminded me of something like that. I will say right up front, I am in favor of this bill, and I will vote for it. Couple of things I'd like to clarify. One was, I heard repeatedly that this bill is unnecessary because there was a U.S...a bill passed by the United States Senate or House, I'm not sure, Senate and House, signed by one of the President Bushes, and that that takes care of it. Well, if that's true, I wish somebody would explain to me why Governor Cuomo signed a bill in New York saying that the baby that was born alive could be left to die. If anybody that didn't pay attention to that, that's exactly what he signed. The Democratic governor of Virginia signed...didn't sign, but spoke in favor of something very similar. It's not an abortion issue. It's a life issue. Abortion is legal, whether we like it or don't like it. At this time, it's legal. This is taking care of an infant born in most likely Planned Parenthood center, alive, that today could be left to die. The bill says the baby must be transported to a hospital, and its life must be...there must be an attempt to save its life. So I also heard comments about, "We need to do more for our children," and I couldn't agree more. Too many children today are not being cared for as they should. I've also heard, not tonight, but I've heard many people make the statement that people who are pro-life need to do more for mothers who are pregnant, who need help. I will speak...my wife, sitting in the back of the room, she has served on the board of three different crisis pregnancy centers, including the one here. She has counseled single moms who had no idea how to be a parent. She's done parenting classes. She's also counseled women who have had an abortion who are struggling with the guilt of that. So we support this local center financially and with our time. So having said that, I understand that it's a very passionate issue, and I understand that people are on one side or the other, and I heard that tonight. So I speak to the rest of my commissioners, as well as everybody in the audience. I hope this bill passes for this resolution. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'd just like to say that tonight, I was thinking about not even making a statement, but I just began to remember when I was a child, and my mother and grandmother had a real man. And I remember one time the doctor told my mother, I was about, I'm about 13 or 14 then. Doctor told my mother, said, "Well, he won't even live till he get 21." But my mother loved me, even though she had to struggle really hard, working all types of fear, all types of homes, taking care of children. She still worked two jobs, three jobs, and brought me up. Now, the doctor don't know where he lived a long time ago, but I know I lived over 21 years, and today, today I am...my birthday was May 31st, I was 86 years old. And I'm a person that loved mothers, because my mother was there by herself. My father, he was out partying, having him a good time. My grandmother worked hard. And that's...I love women. Love my wife, who's been with me right now 63 years. And we have...I can't...I got so many grandchildren, great-grandchildren, I can't even count them. And that's...it bothers me for to take anybody's life. I'm just like a murderer if I go out there and take either one of your lives, either one of your children's lives. I'm nothing but a murderer, according to our society. Now, that's...someone cannot even look out for themselves, and we want to take their lives? I don't want that much authority, because the burden would be too hard for me to bear. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments? I entertain a motion, if there's one.
Mr. Chairman, Emily, stand up. Stand up on the seat, one time you get to. This is my little girl, she's seven years old. All right, you can sit down. Tonight, she red...she wears red, her daddy wears a red tie, her momma wears red, as many others in this room. It represents the blood of Jesus Christ. It represents life. I said when I came on this board of commissioners that I take an oath to the Constitution of the United States. My first oath is to God Almighty. I am a father of Jesus Christ. The word "Christian" is used too loosely today. I'm a father of Jesus Christ. Folks, we have been in budget discussions for over a week. We spent countless hours. Today, we spent countless hours. Over $100 million budget, every bit of it goes towards your benefit, the benefit of the citizens of this county. The vast majority of it goes to DSS and the Health Department. Millions and millions and millions of dollars come into this county and other counties throughout this state from state and federal government. So for somebody to say that we're not concentrating, we're not focusing on life that we have today, you don't know what you're talking about. I focus on the life of the living, and that means those, everyone that has breath. The bill that is going to be voted on this week by our North Carolina House Representatives, what we're doing here tonight is a historic opportunity in the life of Craven County. We're known as the colonial capital across this state, but we can also be known, my colleagues tonight, as a county that stands for life, that our North Carolina...
Sorry.
The bill is exactly what it says. It supports a living, breathing child, born alive. I urge my colleagues to vote in favor.
Thank you. Ma'am.
Mr. Chair, thank you very much. I am a Christian, and I am also a mother, and of course, I am for life. I don't think there is anyone in this room who is not for life, and anyone in this room who is not against infanticide. I don't think that's what the bill is about. Number one, I do not believe this is a county issue with it. I am against the state interfering with personal medical issues. I am against the state interfering with decisions between a patient and their medical providers. I am against the state interfering with decisions by parents for their children. And I am concerned that this opens a very slippery slope where the state has the ability to tell a healthcare provider what he or she must or must not do, not just for infants who are born alive, because if they are born alive, of course, they should receive all medical attention that is appropriate. I am concerned that this is a slippery slope. Once we...because once you set the precedent, then what is the next thing that the state is going to say is required? Is the state going to say that you can or cannot have a hip replacement based on your age? That sets the precedent, because we set the precedent for the state to interfere with personal medical decisions. No, I will not vote for this resolution.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman, I want to thank everybody for coming here, and those people who spoke, because you have that right, and I will defend that right no matter where I am. This is not a question of abortion. It's a question of a live child, a baby. We don't know whether that baby is going to live or die, but if we can save one life, one life, in my opinion, if I had that privilege to save one life, I would feel very lucky. And I therefore will vote for this position.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Entertained.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we support the resolution that has been presented to the Commissioners in support of House Bill 602.
I second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussions, comments? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
No.
Commissioner Mitchell?
No.
Commissioner Sampson?
No.
Vice Chairman Mark?
Yes.
Chairman Liner?
Yes. It passed. Ladies and gentlemen, I want to appreciate everything you sat through and listened here. You got to remember one thing, please, this is our community, meaning your community. We have difference of opinions, but we live together, we work together, and we respect each other's opinion, please. It's important we have this right to do this. This is something that was put on to us by our state legislators. Any of you that's been around here long enough to know, this board is not going to duck its duties that's brought forward to it by its citizens, and we will accept those challenges, however disrful it may be. But we're all family, we all have to live here and respect one another. But one thing you may want to know, and you may want to do, the House has called for a vote on Wednesday on this issue. So this will come to a full House vote in Raleigh on Wednesday, whether it's going to be overridden or not overridden by that. Again, I thank each and every one of you for being here, hearing your comments. It wasn't taken lightly, a lot of information out there, and I...this board truly, truly appreciates everyone that's showing up and speaking. At this time, I'm going to take a 10-minute recess. Any of you with desire to leave, feel free, we're going to start regular business, and we'll be back in 10 minutes. Speaking back to order, moving on to department matters. Planning subdivisions for approval. Don Baumgartner?
We have three subdivisions tonight for your consideration. The first is the Gardens Phase Two at Swift Creek Plantation. The property is owned by Bill Clark Homes of Greenville. It is...was engineered by Thomas Engineering. It is in Township Number One off Streets Ferry Road. It contains 12 lots and approximately 8.32 acres, and the lots are proposed to be served by the county water and individual septic systems. The next subdivision is called Holiday Hill. It's also a final subdivision. Property is owned by Rex Dale Lilly. It is located in Township One off Piney Neck Road. It contains four lots and approximately 4.59 acres. Again, the property is being proposed to be served by county water and individual septic systems. The last subdivision for consideration is called Camp Cairo Estates. Its property was owned by John and Sharon Logan. It's in Township Seven off Camp Cairo Road. It contains eight lots and approximately 2.03 acres. Again, the lots are proposed to be served by county water, and this particular subdivision is going to have the City of New Bern sewer system, which is present in that area. All these subdivisions were considered by the planning board and recommended to the Commissioners for approval. What would be needed at this time would be a vote to approve these subdivisions.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve all three of these subdivisions.
Second. Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, a... Item B, Holiday Hill.
Mm-hmm.
Are they going into the woods area there, or is it just in the cleared... I reckon they got to go in clear area. Everything you got in the yellow, is that correct?
Let me take a look at you. Ma'am, I didn't compare that. It, as I understand it, it's going to be in the cleared area is the area in the... Most of this wood area is not being proposed at this time for any type of development, because that could be developed, so it's in this clear area.
Do you know where they're planning to have the entrance?
I do, I do not. I got that up here.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Don, I got a question on the same. You made, I mean, I made, that's what I'm sure you did not hear it right. I thought you said four lots, but this says eight lots.
Yes, sir, there is eight lots on approximately two point three acres for the Camp Cairo, and the Holiday Hill is for... Excuse me, I'm sorry, here it is eight lots.
Eight lots on four point five nine acres?
Yes, sir, mm-hmm.
Okay.
And they may be individual driveway accesses, but I'll find out for sure. I think, I think this is the one that the proposal was to have two driveways that would have to serve, they only have one entrance to the road for two driveways to serve the dwellings that are there. I believe that was the final determination by the Department of Transportation. But I will check just to be sure.
Any further discussion? You have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Moving on, final budget amendment, Greg Warren.
Good evening, Commissioners. I have two budget amendments for your consideration tonight. The first one is for rescue squads. The ambulance service fees billed and collected by the county on behalf of the following rescue squads are anticipated to exceed original budget projections. It's estimated an additional one hundred and thirty-five thousand will be needed in order to continue remitting the squad payments through the end of the fiscal year. The projected increases in revenue estimates by squad are thirty-one thousand for New Bern, Craven County Rescue, thirteen thousand for Fort Barnwell, twenty thousand for Briston Rescue, eighteen thousand for Cove Sea Rescue, and fifty-three thousand for Township Seven. The attached budget amendment reflects these increases for each squad along with the corresponding expenditures.
Receive a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion. Hearing no discussion. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mark?
Yes.
Chairman Lyman?
Yes.
Okay, the second amendment I have is for the schools. Uh, this includes the late listing penalties that are collecting collected year-to-date for the county and remitted to the school systems have exceeded the ninety-five, ninety-seven thousand that we originally budgeted. At this time, it is projected an additional fifty-three thousand will be collected through the end of June. A budget amendment is being requested that will increase the budget of revenue and the corresponding expenditure to the school system.
Receive a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion?
Sir, I have a question. As a new commissioner, what is a late listing penalty?
Um, that would be penalties for folks who fail to list their properties within the specified time.
List them with the tax office?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, got it.
Yeah, your business is personal property.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mark?
Yes.
Chairman Lyman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, moving on to appointments. Uh, let me see, let's go through here. Pending appointments, Adult Care Home Advisory, Nursing Home Advisory, New Bern Planning and Zoning, Craven County Medical, Carteret Regional Library, and Trillium Health Services. Okay, let's go. Craven Regional Airport, Harry Block is rotating off. We have five applicants. Entertain them. Motion, motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Bill Pope for this seat.
Any other nominations? Hearing none, by acclamation. Okay. Craven Social Services Board, Clayton Gaskin rotating off. Uh, Rex Bennett, District Two, has been recommended by the DSS.
Mr. Chairman, I would recommend we appoint him.
Any other nominations? Hearing none, by acclamation. Craven Community College Board of Trustees. We have Ken Crow, who's asked not to be a rea... not to be reappointed, and Carol Maddox is up rotating off due to that. If the Board will entertain this, I would like to call for a nomination for Ken Crow's position and hold on appointing the other seat until the seventeenth meeting. Is that all right with the Board?
Yes, sir.
That's all right.
Okay, so I'll receive a nomination for Ken Crow.
Mr. Chairman, um, before after the agenda went out, we received an additional application from Mr. Urban Patrick. Uh, all the Commissioners received it. The clerk also received the application. I would ask that, um, Urban Patrick would be appointed to the Ken Crow seat.
Any other nominations? Hearing none, by acclamation. Urban Patrick is so nominated. Eastern Carolina Workforce Development, John Wilson, Anthony Cruz, Bill Green are all seeking reappointment. I have a letter recommended from that committee that they all be reappointed. Any, any other nominations?
Any other?
If not, we'll put them back on as by acclamation. Mr. Vice Chair, is there any, is there any personnel for...
New Bern Planning?
No, no, oh, I'm sorry.
I forgot the New Bern Planning Board. I would like to nominate Dawn Black to be reappointed to the New Bern Planning Board, zoning board.
I don't have that one. Okay, it was right down here. Okay, yep. Any other nominations? Hearing none, by acclamation. I also got Fire Tax Commission. Reappoint Carl Bardwick, District Two, and Chad Anderson, District Four.
Mr. Chairman, I'd ask that Carl Bard would be reappointed from District Two, and I would ask that Chad Anderson be reappointed from District Four.
Any other nominations? Hearing none, by acclamation.
Mr. Chairman.
Sir. Yes. I have one appointment, if the Board so sees fit. Uh, we have one seat available on the Craven County Regional Library Board, and at this time, I'm going to nominate, uh, Vice Chairman Mark to take that position as our regional board. Do we move forward?
Second.
Any other nominations?
He held a gun at my head, I couldn't help it.
By acclamation, he's reappointed, or appointed, not reappointed. And I think my, that's all I have for...
Yeah.
Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Now, petitions of general topics, we have anybody for that?
None.
All right. All right, let's move on to County Attorney's Report.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I have one item for your consideration. Uh, this evening, we have an initial offer to purchase, uh, real estate that the county acquired through a tax foreclosure, six fourteen Dudley Street, uh, in New Bern. It's actually across the ridge over in the James City area, just off Seventy. The offer is forty-five hundred dollars. The taxes and costs originally foreclosed on were five thousand two hundred ninety-two dollars and twenty-six cents. Um, the current tax value is forty thousand, uh, forty dollars. I will note that most of that is, uh, dwelling improvement value, and the home on the lot is in a very, um, dilapidated state, so I would, would perhaps question that value. Uh, in any event, if you accept, uh, this offer to purchase tonight, we'll go through the advertisement and upset bid process, and you will see it again once that process is concluded to take final action, whether to accept this bid or subsequent bid.
I would make a motion to accept the bid.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion?
Do we have to go through the re...
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You've got a minute fifteen, ten and forty-five, we've got you on the clock.
Should I recite the Gettysburg Address now? Thank you.
You want to stay up there?
County Manager.
Mr. Chairman, uh, you've heard from me over the last fourteen days. I am going to withhold my comments tonight, thank you.
Say, can we put that on the record?
Yeah. I'll sign them.
All right, we still have time. We're going to go through Commissioners' Report, and I'm going to start with, uh, Commissioner Booker.
I have nothing to report tonight.
Commissioner Jones?
I have nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner ET?
Nothing to report, sir.
Commissioner Kay?
I have a little something. I'm, I'm going to break it up with a big... Um, on the fifteen, uh, myself along, um, Commissioner Sampson, Commissioner Hunter, and the county manager, and there was one more, I believe. Anyway, we, uh, had a chance to go to New Bern City Hall, where the seven, um, Supreme Court justices held court there. And they had two sessions there, which is, I believe, the first time they ever had court in, in New Bern, North Carolina. And, um, after it was over with, um, against everybody, so they all, but I, I made, and took a lot of pictures with the Supreme Court justices, everybody. And, uh, that time, one of the judges asked me, you've been having two, two dinners at Chester's Restaurant, and I did see it. And we went to the restaurant, had a nice dinner with all the judges and lawyers, everybody very nice. And after dinner was over, well, we came downstairs, and Chief Justice, uh, Cheryl Beasley, she asked me, Commissioner McKay, after you walked me to the Triumph Palace to do a tour. And we walked all the way to Triumph Palace, all of us. And we were escorted by, uh, all the police officers there. And we had a good time. And it's the first I ever been all over, about my palace. And I did got a chance to see it free. And I had a good time. And we went outside to the cellar. Then after it was over with, and then we came back outside and waited for everybody to get back in the car. So she asked, do I want to ride back to my car? And I said, yes. So she asked one of the officers, put in the front seat, and drove back to my car. It was that nice. You do good things, good things will come to you. And, uh, and I had, we had, um, a very good, good time. Uh, that's all I have, I just want to tell that story.
Thank you.
That's all I had, uh...
Commissioner Chairman?
Yes, I, I'd like, wanted to prolong here a little bit. I know he didn't mention nobody but McKay, but...
Why do you call your name?
But my wife and I, we, we also took pictures with Supreme Court justices.
I call everybody names.
And, and we are, of course, my wife, she was, she was a personal friend of the chairman for quite a while before she became the chairman. And we really, they really had a nice session there, of course, or, uh... Or Jerry Morgan, now that's, uh, grandson of our brother. And we appreciate them taking time out to come visit the little small town of New Bern. Even though Raleigh's pretty a lot of places up there, I know I can easily get lost up there. I try not even go through there. Try to go around them. That's what it's all about. Make the friends, not only the ones close around, but make the friends where it counts. Because if there ever been a time that we need help, it's now. We have so many citizens still out of their homes. So many citizens is still on the street, living on the street. I was a little fortunate because I did get back in my home, even though I haven't received the charge money to get here to fix up like I want to. But Lord is still blessing that I can live in my home. And not only live in it, but I can invite other people who don't happen to have a go to my home. That's what it's all about. Not only that I can make it, my family can make it, but that the citizenship can make it. Because we don't know who we're going to need or when we're going to need them. A lot of us might be up strong, getting around today. Look at what happened to tomorrow. It says I was in that accident in Raleigh a few weeks ago. What many people knew me, only the Commissioners that were with me, and maybe a few other Commissioners. Some of them, they wasn't around. Because they had been different areas, because I fell on that chair of my feet. So I can't say he pushes me. But, uh, that's what it's all about. People treated me, even at the hospital, they treated me so good. And the kind of man he took, his time, when he was supposed to have been gone with the other Commissioner, and came to the emergency room along with me. He didn't have to do it, but it did. And he even called my wife and let her know. And I knew he was going to try to come up, that's why I just, I was doing pretty good. I was blessed that I didn't break anything, I had my memory. And so I, I had an informant pack, I called her, I know she'd be worried there, she'd been up there looking around, and I might be able to get home before she got up there. That's what I was planning on anyway. And I did get home. She didn't come up there, but I got back home, so it's a blessing. You don't know when you need people. So be careful how you treat people you meet.
Thanks, sir, Vice Chair.
Mr. Chairman, I have nothing to report.
Good, then I'll take your time. Board, if you don't mind, if you indulge me, I passed out a resolution at the beginning of the meeting Friday. The League of Mayors have reached out to the County Board asking for a resolution in support of Senate Bill Three Seventy-Seven, and that's the Military Base Protection Act. That bill is coming up for a vote, and they've got some real issues and some concerns. And I like to read this for the general public, since we're not going to be able to put it out there, but... Whereas the Craven County Sprout Home Marine Corps Air Station Cherry Point, and whereas North Carolina is the home state to a number of military installations and is known as the most military-friendly state, and whereas these installations are critical to the long-term economic viability of the state and are viewed as strategic assets important to both national security and the North Carolina economy. And whereas the airspace surrounding North Carolina installation and ranges is critical to the mission of the services in conducting training and operation. And whereas the residents of Craven County stand strong in unified support of our military and the mission readiness Marine Corps Air Station Cherry Point. Whereas Senate Bill Three Seventy-Seven, the Military Base Protection Act, provides that construction, operation, and/or expansion activities associated with wind energy facility shall be prohibited in any location included in the area designated in red as significant on the map entitled Vertical Obstruction Impact on a North Carolina Military Mission. As the impact of vertical obstruction in this area have been determined to be significantly high with a high risk for degrading safety and the military's ability to perform aviation training. Now herefore, be it resolved by the Craven County Board... Now herefore, be it resolved by the Craven County Board of Commissioners that we here express our support for Senate Bill three seventy-seven in protection of North Carolina's military installation. This resolution shall be enforced and effective from the date of signature.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to support that, Commissioner.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call.
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mark?
Yes.
Yes. All right, entertain a motion to re-
So move.
Oh, 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 oh. Recess until oh nine hundred on Thursday, June sixth, in the Commissioners' Office upstairs in the County Building.
Right on.
Motion?
Yes.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
We stand in recess.